Welcome, everybody, to the Town of Long Beach Town Council Meeting for April 13th. Let's all do the flag allegiance, and I just happen to have a flag. Of the United States. And to the Republic. One Nation. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the Town Council meeting minutes from March 9?
I so moved, Coker.
I hear a second.
Second, John.
All favor say aye.
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 Do I hear a motion to approve the Town Council's special Zoom meeting minutes of April 1st, 2020?
So moved.
Second, Coker.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opening remark.
Can you say a name instead of aye, so I know who it was? Who was that?
John Wall with the motion on the second one, Coker was second.
All in poker, okay.
Okay. So, uh, opening remarks, you know, everybody's out there watching, I'm watching, I appreciate everybody's efforts to try and stay at home in following the governor's order to stay at home. These are scary times. I hope everybody's taking it seriously. I think they are. And, you know, it wouldn't hurt if you see somebody not staying at home, even to mention something to them in a nice way. We'll be talking more about that later on. First off, Police Department report, Chief?
For the month of March 2019, dispatch calls was 259, it was eight walk-ins before we locked the place down. Drove 3,400 miles, hours worked was 803, overtime was 11, and that was for training. Part-time officers were 12, reserves were 48. There was 25 traffic stops, nine citations, five written warnings, 11 verbal warnings, one parking citation. Six suspicious subjects were checked, five suspicious vehicles, five courtesy services, and one ordinance violation. Six alarms and one accident report. The other report was two domestic disputes. The one that was turned over to the prosecutor's office warrant has been issued, however, we're not arresting him at this time because of the jail situation. The other domestic was turned over to the Child Services because there was a minor child in the home when it took place. One fraud investigation. We've had several, one assist to the county for an overdose that we responded to, but we've assisted Michigan City and the Sheriff's Department on numerous domestic calls during this time, so it's all this staying at home, everybody's getting excited, so. That's it.
Okay. Police Commission report, Nick?
Uh, no, no report from the Police Commission. A meeting yet for the start of the year, and need to get one on the books. This, uh, this is our first virtual meeting here for a council. We can work out the bugs, it might be an option here, Chief, that we can consider, so.
I need to have one, so.
Yeah, okay. I'll send you a note here while we're chatting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Volunteer Fire Department, John?
Uh, what I have here for you is through the end of March, we had, uh, year-to-date calls are 10. Average turnout for each fire call was eight personnel, that's reflected in the fact that most of those were false alarms. Seven of those 10 were false alarms, hazardous condition, an actual fire, and a good intent call. Medical calls were up significantly this year, year-to-date we're at 14. Average turnout for medical calls is five individuals. Those calls range from full arrests, heart attack, respiratory, six injury calls, and three sick people. Average overall response time for fire calls this year is 6.04 minutes. Average response time for medical calls is 5.12 minutes.
Okay, and Fire Commission, John?
We met on 3/25. We had a virtual meeting, couple of us were at the station, but we essentially had a virtual meeting with the Fire Commission. We had a couple of things we talked about. One, we have some, some new sets of drawings that are of other departments that are similar to ours, so we've got some more intelligence on a plan for the new station project. We also talked about the delivery method for the construction of the project. Everybody was in agreement that we want to stick with a design-build concept, but we did talk about getting another design-build contractor involved. We're going down that road now, so we will have a couple of proposals to, to review.
Okay. Street Department, Tom Dolph. Now I've got to find Tom to free him up.
He was near the top.
There he is, yep. Tom, you've got the floor. The Street Department report?
Okay, for the month of March, we've taken all of our salt and snow removal equipment off the trucks, doing routine cleanup around town, Town Hall, Community Center. Had the street sweeper out, cleaned up some of the streets again, and doing some drain cleaning, and making sure our leaf machines are ready for leaf pickup starting April 20th.
Great. Questions? Street Commission, John?
Uh, Street Commission did not hold a March meeting. Our meeting was scheduled that week when you, when, when the executive order came out that we were not to hold meetings, so we will gear up for a virtual meeting, hopefully by May. We did, Tom has, well, two issues really. We're very proud of the fact that through Tom's efforts and the engineer, we were awarded a 900, over $990,000 worth of community grant money for, for, uh, street work this year, which is a great accomplishment for a town of our size. So that process will continue to move forward. The next, uh, the next part of that process is scheduling bid dates and that sort of thing. So we'll get with Bill, uh, you know, and make sure we're all together on the funding and that. But right now, the state's awarded us $990,000, which is, was quite an accomplishment. The second item that Tom and I talked about, I had some conversation with Chris earlier today. There is a quotation in, Tom's, we've been working on a project over near Dr. Houck's house on Moore Road for the last couple of years. We do now have a hard quote. Tom's been trying to get some other contractors to quote, which we've not had much success with. So right now, it's approximately a $27,000 quotation from Woodruff &amp; Sons, and we'd like to push that forward if we could. Dr. Houck's been very patient, but he's, he'd like to see that project move forward, as would the rest of us. There's drainage issues up there, some structure repair and that sort of thing. Chris, I'm going to defer to you for a second. I think you, you mentioned that we may have to, I, I don't know if we can go ahead and, you know, authorize that work, or do we need to do some more paperwork or something?
Well, ultimately, I, as talking to John earlier, I want to make sure, and I think the council is aware, that I represent Woodruff &amp; Sons, so I want to make sure that that disclosure's out there to the extent that he, I don't think there's any conflict with regard to the question at issue, but I think my fiduciary duty is to disclose that to the council, so that I could recuse myself from any further discussion i- if that were to be an issue. But the, the issue at hand is the amount, you can certainly, I haven't been involved, I don't think John was either, as he said, Tom handled it and, and does quite well with it. He's certainly brought a lot of money into the town, and but for, um, for the quotes, the amount is certainly within the, the range that you can, um, go ahead and, and approve the contract, provided that invitations were sent out, and just because you only got one response isn't indicative or doesn't stop you from, from, um, approving or accepting the quote and entering into the contract. The amount is in the certainly within the, the range that you simply get to invite quotes, then award the contract and/or the, the work and/or the contract to responsive and responsible voter, for lack of a better description. So that's what I have to add, presuming those things were done, and if there are questions, Tom is probably the proper person to do that. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions you have from a technical standpoint. But I, I do think, based on the information I have, that the amount and the type of work are certainly within the, the, uh, the range of what you can approve at this meeting without the normal, uh, amounts and the normal, uh, really entail their detailed procedures that are required.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead. That's you, Tom?
Yeah, yeah, it's me. Um, on that, on that proposal, I, I, item number seven is an alternate to be able to add in the, um, structure that's already there to have it refurbished, cleaned, or whatever it needs. But that's an additional $7,979.44. So the overall thing could potentially be a total of $35,173.88.
In my opinion, would remain the same as to the va- as to the amount of the contract and the procedure required, so other than Tom simply making you aware of the total that's in play here, it's been up for approval. And I don't want to speak for you, Tom. I think the, as for the total amount that could be under contract, you're still within the range that you could approve it and award that contract, presuming that's what your inclination is to do.
Okay. And are we able to, to approve that tonight, or does that need to come back to us?
Well, I, you can approve it. I, I I think the only thing that my involvement would be is if you wanted it to be subject to attorney review of the contract, but you can award that. You can award or accept that quote and then move to the contract stage, so I, I think you can accept uh, the quote and award the work.
Okay, and so Tom and John, do you guys recommend that?
I, I do. Contractor is very trustworthy as far as that goes. Um, you know, I've reached out to two other contractors and had meeting dates set, and neither one of them showed up on those dates.
Well, this is Coker here. Did you give them like written invitations, or just call them, or how'd that work?
No, no, because the, even, but the thing of it is, is for some reason, they weren't even responding to, um, phone calls. One of them, one of them wouldn't answer a phone call, but I, so I sent him a text message. And, um, they did set up a time to come out, you know, and, and never showed. Uh, the other contractor, he was, it's kind of typical that, that, um, if we call him and they don't answer, I'll send a text right away, so then that way, if they are in a piece of equipment, because one of the um, contractors is also the equipment operator. So I, I give him a text to also at his leisure, when he's available, to call me or text me back or whatever. And the second one, um, was set up to come in and meet with me on la- any day last week, but he didn't show up at all. No phone call, no anything.
Okay. So, I guess, uh, I'd entertain a motion to accept the contract pending attorney review? Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion. John Wall?
Do I hear a second?
What are we actually doing for Dr. Houck?
Not for him, it's, it's to repair the drainage on the road, on Moore Road above his house.
Okay.
Above his property.
So it's actually on Moore Road?
It's a situation.
It's been a problem for a number of years, Mayor.
Okay.
This is Nick, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it was unanimous. Okay, John, is that it for the Street Department or Street Commission?
That's all.
Uh, Park Board, Kendra, you've been unmuted. You should be able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. We had no Mar- Mar- March meeting due to the COVID-19, um, you know, situation. We're exploring a virtual, a virtual meeting for April. We'll keep everyone posted if that's the route we decide to take. Um, our ongoing projects right now, we're gathering feedback and comments for Stop 21 and 28 rehab. Emails have gone out to as many residents as we could find in our database in those areas. We also posted information on Facebook. Of course, all comments from all residents are welcome. And please send your, um, comments to our group email, longbeachparkboard@gmail.com. Uh, landscaping and maintenance ongoing at all stops. Everything's shaping up. We've had some, um, stop work, landscaping done by Healy, and Tom and his crew have made, um, a lot of other improvements, so we're getting ready for spring. We've had invasive blue vine grass removed at Stop 19, and some river rock added and landscaping completed at Stop 14, so that's finished. And we have some new grass growing at Stop 20. We have some minor, minor alterations to Stop 18, which will include an additional bench for seating and relocating the garbage toders. We're exploring adding pickleball courts to outside court area by the current basketball courts at the Community Center. Uh, one of our members is working jointly with Civic Association and a member uh, from Civic on this, um, in getting some quotes and figuring out where, how many courts can we fit in, and where's the best place for them, so hopefully that will be, uh, will be a welcome addition for everyone in the community. Uh, the summer camp plans are currently on a holding pattern due to the COVID-19. We've sent out communications on Facebook as well as emails to parents and trying to spread the word that, you know, as everyone else is saying, we just don't know if we're going to be able to hold summer camp. Couple issues we have going on. Uh, Stop 18 dune grass was recently destroyed this Saturday when, um, homeowner adjacent to the stop rode several motorcycles through the town property and destroyed the grass. The cost of this was, uh, $1,087. I will note too that this cost would have been much higher had we paid for labor instead of having the volunteers that we did when this was originally planted. Uh, we had about 15 neighborhood volunteers, um, about six months ago, six months ago to plant this grass. So to say the residents at Stop 18 are upset is an understatement about this, and, um, we'll talk further, but we expect the homeowners to pay for this, not only the room, room grass, but also the cost of installing new dune grass. The bikes were ridden all over the property, including a small path between the west house and the boardwalk, and all over the, the town property. And the homeowner has also taken the dune grass restoration signs we placed at the stop to keep people off, just while we're regrowing this grass, and place them in their own personal yard. We've got a lot of issues there that's, um, very concerning, that we need to address. Um, we've had some dumping issues at Stop 26. Again, um, lots of complaints from the neighbors around there that enormous amount of yard refuge has been dumped on the town property beach stop area at 26. Again, the town paid a lot of money for this area to be cleaned out with invasive species removed, scrub brushes cleaned out, and the ivy growing here was beginning to fill in nicely. We made contact several months ago with the person doing the dumping, and he admitted doing it and said he would stop. He has not stopped, however. And once again, the stop is now filled with his spring cleanup debris from his yard. I received several calls about this over the weekend. I attempted to speak with the homeowner once again, but no one has been home. We feel he too should be responsible for the new cost of cleanup that this is going to entail. The town has paid a lot of money to have this cleaned up.
Kendra, that's at Stop 26?
Stop, Stop 26, yeah. Um, we have an ongoing issue with a handful of residents abusing the town stops. Case in point, the two I just mentioned at 26 and 18. But we also receive many complaints about the toders at the stops being used for personal garbage, and, and many are overflowing. I pulled the toders to the curb myself last, last week at several stops. The garbage men do not typically start emptying the stops at toders until late, the stop toders until late May, but with the COVID-19, they will not be getting out of their trucks at all. So the garbage is going to continue to pile up here unless the responsible homeowners are notified in a meaningful way. So what I mean by this is that normal, this time of year, normal debris from walkers, riding a bike, having a water bottle, going down to the beach and putting a poop bag or something from a dog walk or whatnot, it's fine, we can totally handle that. But homeowners at several stops are not, um, they're using the town stops as their own personal trash, as opposed to filling their own and having to pull them out when they leave on Sunday, so they're filled with windows, blinds, drapes, you know, grocery bags from Al's. And so we, on the park board, end up getting the calls from the other adjacent homeowners. So got a lot of issues, and, um, I just think in general that, um, we request either visits from the Police Department or official letters from the town, saving warners, warning letters and fines be sent to these small group of offenders, and again, it is a small group. We have worked hard to fix up these stops. We cannot keep wasting time and money to redo them. The neighbors in these areas are upset this keeps happening with no consequences to the guilty party. We will be focusing on Stop 21 and Stop 28 for rehab next, and it has been brought to our attention that the water fountain at Stop 21 is paid for in part by the private group, Stop 21 Beach Club, who own the adjacent lot. We think this should not be the case, as this fountain is on town property and everyone uses this fountain, not just Stop 21 Beach Club members. I would like this to be addressed by the Water Department if possible at the next meeting, and the responsible billing party become the Town of Long Beach in its entirety. The water fountain is a very popular addition to the stop, and we have been asked to provide them at other stops as well during rehab. We have always declined the request to install any more fountains than the one that already exists at Stop 21. But we would like this particular fountain to remain in place, as many runners and walkers do use it. So, uh, just kind of a, you know, prepared statement I wrote ahead of time, but lots of information there, but so, just recap our issues and then our, our projects. That's it.
So Kendra, do we know who the offenders are at, as far as these garbage toders?
Um, uh, it, not for sure. I mean, pretty good guess. We know who the offenders are dumping the debris, because we confronted politely last year and had a discussion, and he admitted, but, I mean, it's, uh, no, it's kind of obvious, but no, no, you know, nothing that would hold up in quote, or court, quote unquote, and, you know, just guesses.
So.
But the complaints we usually get are the homeowners, you know, adjacent to the stops or nearby across the street, whichever that may be. It's easier for them to just not worry about their toders when they leave over the weekend, so you know, I'm not saying it's the west or the east adjacent lakefront homeowners, it could be hillside, could be in the area, could be anybody really, but a lot of them, 19's a particular problem, 22's a problem, 18's a huge problem. 20's a big problem. Some of them have no problem whatsoever. 28's not a prob- you know, it, it just runs the gamut, so it, it, I could very, well, we can all make a very good educated guess, but again, no, you know, proof, but I would, I think it would be, we would just like, the park board would just like, um, some sort of support, whatever that may be, whatever the town thinks would be the best way to like, really let people know we're serious, whether that's a letter from the attorney, a letter from the police, uh, just saying like, this is serious. If you're dumping, you're going to get fined. If you're, you know, it's just, we spent a lot of money. The beach grass at Stop 18 was a thousand dollars, and we all did the labor on it. 15 volunteers did the labor. So if you had to pay for labor, that'd be 2,000. Well, now we got to reorder it, so we're not paying for that again. I mean, they, so, but when there's no consequence, when there's no, you know, whether it be in this guy at 20th or what, whatever, I just, we just would like a little support or direction, I guess, and somehow enforcing this to let people know this is serious, like, we're spending a lot of money and people are happy with the upgrades, and we can't keep ruining them and keep inventing the wheel and, you know, fixing them up time after time.
So as far as the toders, could we put a sign on the toders explaining to people that private residence garbage is not to go in there? And if that doesn't do better, maybe the, I'm sorry, you have?
Yeah.
And it hasn't worked?
No.
Then, maybe the next. Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, yeah, I mean, we, we did that at two stops, and it was completely ignored. It, it may work at other stops. We didn't do them at all of the offender stops. We did it at two of them, and it, and it didn't really help. What really helps is when we did have a very good idea. Uh, one of our park board members reached out to the homeowner and just sent, you know, a nice communication, and most of the time, you know, like this person just said, "I'm so sorry, guilty as charged. We were just, you know, looking for an easy way out. It will never happen again." And that has not happened again at that particular spot, but same thing at 26 with the person dumping all their yard debris after they've cleaned up this past week. Um, we talked to him six months ago, and he said he'd stop, and now it's all full fill again with his yard work, so it's like, you know, I think they feel like if they can get away with it, they can. So we've, we've definitely communicated to people when we can and just tried to, you know, keep everybody out of it and say, "Hey, can you stop? Can you, you know, whatever," and, and a few instances, it works, but and a lot of them, it doesn't.
How about removing the toders from the stops where we have a problem?
Well, we tried that, um, and Tom Dolph and I were in agreement with that. What happened, believe it or not, it was worse. People actually dumped their trash in the toder containment area, like literally would pick up their kitchen garbage can and dump it over. So Tom and his crew last year had to spend time on their hands and knees picking up people's food. It was worse, so Tom and I were in agreement this year, let's just leave them, and that's why some of the stops were, okay, people didn't mess with them. Other stops were full of people's trash, but what happened when there was no toders is the offenders didn't care at all. They just dumped the, you know, glad white bag over the, um, over the railing into the toder containment, and then the raccoons got to it, and the animals got to it, and then trash was everywhere, so that's why we're asking for some sort of, you know, fine, punishment, warning, this is serious. It's just like, it just is a waste of everybody's time and money.
About signs and removing the containment area from those stops?
Yeah, we, that might help. I mean, it would have to honestly be like, um, signs, plus we'd have to board up the toders, and I don't even know if that'll work. I mean, there's a, like, a window right now at Stop 18. Like, somebody just removed their windows, and they're leaving them at 18, so people can, I guess, the town can remove it, and the other day, there was like a, a table at a stop, so we definitely can try that. I'm just, again, saying, we need some sort of other finding, support, you know, scare, scare tactic, for lack of a better word, or whatever, like, just, it's just getting a little annoying, and I feel bad for the adjacent homeowners who live there and aren't, um, doing this, when they have the garbage spilled into their yard, and it blows into, you know, their property, and they have to wake up and look at overflowing trash cans full of food and rotten bananas and, and whatever. So I'm just, you know, opening it up for discussion, think about it later, you know, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, and just putting it out there.
Well, I guess my thought would be, why don't we remove the entire area that, you know, the gated area where the garbage toders are? And let's put signs up at the remaining stops that still have those, reminding people. And Chief, if people are dumping garbage, that's got to be a violation, right? Chief?
He's on mute.
The only problem is catching them in the act.
Yeah. But at least we can be aware, um,
This isn't the first time this problem's occurred.
Too, that it's a violation.
Right, this isn't the first time this has occurred.
Yeah.
But I do agree, if you're going to take the toders out, you got to take the whole thing out.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they'll pile it, pile it on top of that.
Yeah. Well, Kendra, you have, have, I, as far as I'm concerned, my authority of Town Council, do I hear a motion to remove those at the stops where you have a problem?
I think you're going to just encourage them to take it to the next stop. I, I don't know that that's going to solve it.
Well, and I guess my thought would be, you know, frankly, I've thought for a long time that we shouldn't have garbage toders at our stop, stops. I, I think garbage in, garbage out, you know, if you go to the beach, you bring it in a bag, you take it home in a bag.
Can we, I mean, could we add this as a new business, or new business item or old business to our, our May meeting, and, and perhaps the park board to maybe discuss it a little bit further, maybe they come, come to, to this meeting again, maybe with some thoughts and vice versa, so we can do some thinking as well?
All right, let's put some signs up in the meantime.
And I will just say, food for thought, um, you know, we've been rehabbing all but, we've got all but three stops left to go, and we've got feedback from got all but three stops left to go. And we've got feedback from, you know, I don't know, 15, 20 residents at every stop. And I'm in agreement with you, Bob, personally. I don't like the toters. I grew up, we never had toters in 1978 when I moved here, but whatever. We've asked every stop, do you want them? And every stop wants them, to the point where some stops want four of them. Like stop 28, we're asking for feedback and before someone wanted three or four. And, you know, we're limiting it to two because we've seen what happens. You put, if you put four out there, four will get filled. You put 10 out there, 10 will get filled. Like, people don't use them necessarily just for their empty coat pans coming up from the beach. They're filled with their trash on Sunday when they leave or, you know, their blinds, their windows, whatever. So I just will say, food for thought. We have asked every stop, including 21 and 28 and 18, right now, do you even want the toters? And they've all said yes. So personally, I'm in agreement with no toters, but we've had several surveys and people and nobody seems, I won't say nobody, but most of the people at the stop still want the toters. So it'll just have to be some sort of, you know, new plan or whatever thinking around that. But I just would have to say, I don't see the toters going away because everyone, the majority, I should say, seem to want them. So I think they'll stay.
Well, Bill, maybe we could put out a blast email to people, saying, if you want to keep your toters, you got to stop using them. And if you see your neighbors using them for their yard refuse or their old windows, call, call Bob.
Yeah. Sadly, sadly, it's not going to get better in June and July. So.
No, probably not.
Talking about in May.
Well, and just note too, just to clarify, the issue at 26, they're not putting their yard refuge in the toter. They've dumped it all over the town stop. It is all over the Ivy that we had cleaned, weeded, scrub bushes removed. So when that, and that actually is a beach right now at 26. So it looked beautiful, picture perfect, and now it looks like crap. Somebody threw all their weeds, all their junk all over stop 26. So they, I actually aren't, in that case, they're not putting their, you know, their yard refuge in the toter. They're just throwing it over the side of the rail.
So Chief, we know that's a violation, right?
Yes.
So can we stop there and talk to that gentleman and maybe give him a violation and make him clean it up?
Kendra, send me an email with the information. When you talk to him.
Okay.
And then Chief, I know you guys were involved at stop 18 this weekend.
There was a report, there was a report generated for that damage. It was done.
Okay. So then Chris, so we have a report generated. Can the town send them a bill?
He's muted, Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was, I muted myself there. So I, yes, the town, we can absolutely send a letter or the town can, park board. And I mean, from there, it's, you may have to take action later, but you can certainly send one in demand payment.
So Kendra, if you could, send me a bill for what they did and then I'll forward that to Chris and we'll get that process going, okay?
Okay, will do. And I'll send the information to Chief as well about 26.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions about park board? Community center, John Coker?
I have received no report from the community center other than the fact that I know it's closed. And I assume it'll stay that way for a while.
And water board, Mary Lou?
We didn't have a meeting because the town was closed down. Hopefully we'll have one in May.
Okay. And I'm pretty sure budget and finance didn't meet, right, Bill?
No, we did not meet. And the only thing that I want to, you know, the wondrous $990,000 award, you know, where our current bank balance is 1.675 million, which means we're still in very good shape. But the $1.3 million worth of paving we're going to get out of that is going to cost us about $400,000. So I am a little concerned, not about our financial soundness, but I'm seeing that I'm usually counting on a big chunk of money coming in in June. And I'm hearing that we're going to give everybody a pass on that. And typically, we get more money in June than in December because of the, because people pay their taxes in, for the whole year sometimes because they can afford it. I'm thinking about sending out an email, asking people, since interest rates are, I think I get about one cent per $1,000 in my bank savings account. So I'm hoping that people may think about paying all their taxes in May and for the whole year. I don't know whether that's going to sell or not, but that's something that I'd like to see happen. Because I think the paving is good, but it's going to, and I'm very happy about it, but it's going to cost us, with the engineering costs on top of our contribution, it's going to cost us $400,000. So it's just something to think about as we go forward. So all you people who have money in the bank, please send it.
Human resources, I don't think they met.
No, we did not meet.
Okay. Building commission did meet. We met in the gymnasium and attempting to keep social distance between one another.
Was that before the shutdown?
It was before we shut down. Yeah, that was March 13th. We had, at 2909 Lakeshore Drive, we issued a stop work order because work was being done beyond the scope and size of the plans that were submitted. Also citations have been issued for plowing sand at 3110 Lakeshore Drive. 2010, Juneway Sunset Excavating installed a septic without a permit. 2932 Montclair, a new deck was built without a permit, an unregistered contractor. We had a lot of discussion about seawall repairs, which were ongoing at that time. Basically, we had the coastal engineers there and went over the plans with them and they were all following the plans. And anytime there was any question, we got that resolved. There was a 2105 Oriole Trail, they wanted to remove a deck and install a deck with enclosed porch. However, it's a non-conforming property, so they'll have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that. 28, 29 Lakeshore Drive, some pavers retaining long real air and artificial turf are going to be installed. But it looked like they had coverage issues, so they need to give us figures, but it looks like they're up to about 60, 70% coverage. And then at 3108 Lakeshore Drive, that's the last house in Long Beach before you get to Dunland. They have issues with their seawall there. We had lots of concerns about their proposed seawall repair. Gave them a number of conditions that they had to meet for that, for their plan to go forward. They've come back with a lot of changes in the plan. And so we've decided that when they meet all those conditions and they've submitted a complete application, then we'll have to schedule probably a virtual meeting to go over those plans. That work was going to be done, I forget the name of the company, but the owner of the property and who initially installed the seawall was the same fellow who installed the seawalls between stop 22 and 23. And at the end of that meeting, a motion was made and seconded and passed to send to the town council a recommendation that that contractor and the contractor who actually installed the, see the subcontractor who actually installed the seawall have their registrations rescinded. However, with the COVID-19 update, I really would like that meeting to take place in person, although I wonder if that's going to happen. So we'll, we'll see what happens with that. But that was passed and that has been sent to the town council. We could have a virtual meeting to have that hearing or we could wait. At this point, that contractor and subcontractor don't have any pending applications for permits. So I don't feel any real urgency, but I do feel that we need to make sure we protect the residents of Long Beach from contractors that I think are substandard. And that was just for that meeting. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet, so there's no report. Advisory Plan Commission, Nick, we did not meet either, right?
No, we had a meeting in March. Correct.
And Bill, do we have a building permit and revenue report? Did you get those numbers?
No, never got them. I asked if we could get them after the meeting, but I have nothing since February.
Okay, I'll talk to the building commissioner about that.
Okay. We had two electric permits issued with revenue of $41, collected on a total of $410. Legal expenses paid in March 2020 were $10,000, $0.80, $5,986 to Braisi, Nelson and James, $170 to Nighthoppy, Kurnick and Knight, $3,942.00 to Austin, Kuiper, Gysitis. And then we paid in March, the Corden Group, $6,250. So I'd like to have a motion to accept the reports and the, please.
Does this make a motion to accept the minutes?
I second it, Deanna.
Any discussion? Tom, favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Unfinished business, Lakeshore Drive sewer update. As far as I know, we're supposed to have a public hearing, but that's not going to work very well virtually. So I think at this point, Michigan City Sanitary is going forward with the plan, but there's definitely a public hearing that has to take place before any work can start, for sure. And before we can authorize any work to take.
How much notice do we get to give, how much notice do we give to residents about a public hearing? Is it like three days or?
Chris, do you know?
No, there will be at least 10 days notice prior to that hearing, if not more. Yeah, I don't think that's anywhere near the radar right now. So I just, there was a conversation with Downstate recent just about procedures and then all of this hit and nobody can really meet or do anything. But I think paperwork has been submitted just for the state to gather its thoughts and be able to begin to say yea or nay right with, with the proposed project. And, but yeah, there's a lot of process left, I guess, to leave it simple.
Okay.
I think it's going to be the preliminarily, look at the loan amount and that might get preliminary approval subject to a public meeting. That's what I got out of it.
Oh, may I speak? I thought that we had to do something 30 days after the 21st, that the dock dead date was 3/20. Could we?
That, that got rescinded, especially with COVID-19. Whenever we can do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say the town is on track with what Haas initially gave as its schedule of events that needed to happen. And even though a little bit backwards, everything is subject to the public hearing. But moving forward.
Okay. That it for sewers. Preordance, do you want to do that in a virtual meeting or do we want to wait till we can meet in person?
Let's wait.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
That okay with everybody?
I'm okay with it.
Good.
Yeah, that's fine. I do have some comments and feedback, but we can, we can do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Next up, I have Rebecca Lipton, who asked me to put on the agenda. She's concerned about traffic on Moore Road. Let me find her, though.
I unmuted.
Oh, great. Fantastic. Rebecca. So go ahead. It's all yours.
Okay. Well, I emailed this morning to you, Dr. Lomé, and to Clerk DeFuneac. I don't know if you got a PDF of a little document that I put together. I was hoping, I didn't have anybody else's email, so I didn't send them to you. Did you happen to distribute that, Clerk DeFuneac?
I forwarded it to everyone.
Okay.
You did?
I did.
Oh, great. Then I'm not going to read it. I'll just leave it for everyone's enjoying pleasure to read themselves. But let me just summarize. You know, I came, I think in February and talked about the concern, the ongoing concern about high-speed traffic on Moore Road. And then one of the, a gentleman at the meeting, whose name I did not get, was, who lives on Chassleton, also said that he has problems with speeding. And I, the document I sent you goes through the rationale, which is basically every summer, there's high-speed traffic on Moore Road. Every year, it seems to get worse because people are doing those Airbnbs or VRBO or whatever, and they're renting out to big parties of people who tend to have lots of alcohol and not so much concern for residents. You know, kids walk along Moore Road with their parents or without their parents to go to the beach. Stop 31 is Shoreland Hills only, but there's a lot of people there. And this year, if everything seems to be washed out, stop 31 looks like it's still, there's still beach there. So that may be even worse this year. Let me, anyhow, that's, that's basically it. And what I'm proposing is to use a couple of, there are a couple of passive alternatives to having police patrols stopping people. And the rationale for using passive measures is just that they can be there 24/7 and they're relatively cost effective. There are alternatives now to those horrible speed bumps that clunk around your car. There are very wide ones called speed tables. There's another alternative called speed cushions. I, and I would be glad to do the research and get prices and different descriptions for you. The document that you, that was distributed by Dr. Lomé today should have some details on these alternatives. These are, these are things that are in the range of $1,000 to $1,500 to $2,500 to go across a road. They can be removed for the winter time so that snow removal equipment can get in. They don't seem to, they're not supposed to impede emergency vehicles, so emergency vehicles can drive around them. But they do tend to slow traffic to 20 to 25 miles an hour. Another alternative, another passive alternative would be a radar speed sign. I don't know if anybody remembers, last summer, there was a radar speed sign on the Michigan City side of Moore Road that was there for about six or eight weeks. Councilman Simmons from Michigan City was the one who was instrumental in having that installed. And that seat, that shows your speed and the posted speed. And it tended to, it certainly shamed me to slow down. And I tended to shame other people to do that. So either one or both of those alternatives could be used. And there are a couple of very nice places that we could, that I could recommend and other residents probably could also recommend as far as where to install these devices. Let's see what else. The obstacles to installing them would be, first of all, the cost. And I really would, you know, if we do some exploration as far as what's available, I don't think that's me. As far as what's available, I think you'll find that it's pretty cost effective. And the other-
Sign that is by the roadway?
Pardon?
How much is that electronic sign?
Well, I looked it up on the web. There's, there's a bunch of different companies. But one of the signs that I looked up on the web, it was about $3,500 for a sign that included a solar battery, so you don't have to plug it in. And it was on a wheel, so you could, you know, you could put it down and then you could move it to another intersection if you wanted to. You can also have them installed on post, but I don't know exactly. I could get you, you know, three or four different companies pretty easily. If you guys want to explore this, it would, I would be glad to, you know, put some time into doing the research.
Bob, wasn't there a person in Dunland Beach that- Bob, wasn't there a person in Dunlam Beach that hit a speed bump on their bike and then they sued Dunlam Beach?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a speed bump, though. Again, these are not speed bumps. These are either speed cushions, which are short segments that go across the road with space in between, or speed tables, which go up a little bit. And then they're about three, they're about a yard or a yard and a half wide. So you go up and you go over and then you go back down again. So it's much more, it's much gentler. Okay, so you need to see the pictures and I'd be glad to get you the pictures.
Okay.
Alrighty. I could go on and on, but please take a look at the document. My phone number and email are on there if you have any questions. And again, if you, if you on the town council are interested in this, it would be great and I'd be glad to put some time into, you know, helping work out the kinks.
Sounds good. I know when I was on vacation in Colorado, the community we stayed in had a solar powered sign like that, that showed your speed and the speed, the speed limit. And it was pretty effective. They're not cheap, but you know, if we have a problem, maybe that's something we need to think about. So it really wasn't unattractive either. I know the one that was there last year was on a trailer. That didn't look particularly aesthetically pleasing, but the sign really, I thought, looked pretty nice.
Can we put it on the east side of the road? Because isn't that where the speed is coming over the hill?
You mean?
Yeah, we should probably have to talk to Michigan City about it.
Yeah. There used to be one by the church, remember, by Notre Dame Church, but that's pretty far back.
Yeah, you know, the problem with the road is it's straight away.
The hill's the most dangerous part because they come over that and it's blind.
Yeah.
Where I live, right there where Westgate makes a T-intersection into Moore Road. At the bottom of the dune, it's about a block and a half in from Lake Shore Drive. And they just come down there so fast. It's.
So are you on, as part of your property on Moore Road?
We are, yeah. Our property is on Moore Road, on the Long Beach side. On the west side. Now, neighbors on the east side in Shoreland Hills and Michigan City, they're all concerned about it too. So I think one of my neighbors, pardon?
Do you have room for a sign on your yard?
Sure. I have, I actually, I actually have an old posted speed limit sign of twenty-five miles an hour on my property, right up against the road.
Okay.
But, you know, I just want to say one more thing and then I'll shut up. And that is, I lived for a long time in Oak Park, Illinois. And the street, one street over from us was a street that was between high schools. And it was a sort of, it was all residential, but it was a street where people tended to speed. And they put up speed tables, which again, they go up about three and a half or four inches. Then they flatten out for about a yard and then they go down. And they put two or three of those up with one, one in every block, with about three blocks. And that really, really worked. That really slowed the traffic down. And the emergency vehicles didn't seem to have a problem with it either. So.
Is that as expensive as the sign?
No, it's cheaper.
Okay.
But again, I haven't, I haven't gone on Moore Road and measured exactly the width of the road and done that kind of stuff. But I can do that. If you guys are interested, I'll take the time to do it the next couple of weeks, wearing my mask and gloves.
And watching for traffic.
Oh, no kidding.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Becky. So under new business, executive order regarding the pandemic. As you probably all know, Mayor Perry.
Do we want to give, Bob, do we want to give her some direction to go ahead with her investigation or?
I think she could send us the information and then we can talk to the chief and figure out how we can do it. So Becky, if you can do that, that would be great.
Okay, I'll get to work.
I'll get us some quotes on both things.
That should come to the street, that should come to the street commission, I think, and then we can.
Thank the police commission also.
Good point, okay.
First, then I'll bring it to you.
Okay, how about if I call Clerk DeFuniac and get the information as far as how to do a virtual? Are you guys going to do virtual meetings of streets or police?
Yeah, I think the thinking, I mean, for any of these meetings, if they're going, we have to make, make means publicly available. And if this seemed to work, probably try to, I don't want to speak for Bob, but for the, at least for the police commission meeting, I think we would try to resume.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to. This situation may not go away anytime real soon. So I think we're going to have to start probably doing more virtual meetings in all likelihood.
Yeah, it's, yeah, things are, things are going to stay the way they are for a while. I think so too. I'll go ahead and try to get some information as far as prices and resources. And if I send the information to you, Clerk DeFuniac, can you?
Yeah, I'll do, yeah, so I'll take some of it.
Okay, great. Thanks a lot again.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, so under new business, as you probably all aware, or hopefully all aware, Mayor Perry in Michigan City put out an executive order, basically stating that anybody who comes from out of state in Illinois needs to self-isolate for twenty, for fourteen days before going out. Frankly, I wish I'd have thought of something like that sooner, but I'm happy to steal his idea. I think, you know, we're in a unique position here in Long Beach. We're a vacation community. And I think we're particularly vulnerable to people coming from an area that's a hotspot and bringing this virus to Long Beach. Given that, I had Chris work on an executive order similar to Mayor Perry's. For those of you watching, Nick, did that get posted on the website?
Yeah, I mean, I think you sent an updated one at four thirty. I mean, the quickest we get it was like right at the start of the meeting here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So is it, is it on the website now or not?
It's on, yeah.
Okay, so anybody who's at home and listening, if they want to go on the town website, they can kind of follow along and see what we have here. But basically, it's got the same idea that Mayor Perry's does about the fourteen days. Chris and I tweaked this a little bit this afternoon. And as I read it through again, Chris, one other thing I found on there was on page two, under the third whereas and the third period, it says require out-of-state residents who have second homes. I think we need to strike the second homes part. And it's basically, we need to just make sure that anybody coming from out of state needs to follow this fourteen-day self-isolation. I think we just missed one on there. Because we had discussed this this afternoon, right, Chris?
Bob?
Chris, you hear me? Maybe you're muted, hold on.
I am, yes, I.
Okay.
I have duly noted, so whatever you guys decide.
So I just, I just think we shouldn't just limit it, limit the fourteen-day quarantine to people who are out-of-state residents. It's frankly, anybody coming from out of state. Whether you're a resident or not, you need to self-isolate for fourteen days.
So how, so how, how do you want to proceed here, Bob? I mean, if we just have questions or comments on some of the sections, I mean, do you want to take them one by one or as they, you want to get through more of a summary? Or how do you want to do?
Yeah, I'll do a bit of a summary first. So, yeah, I probably should do that first. So basically, we have that. Initially, we thought about whether we wanted to close down the golf courts completely. I've had discussions today with Brian Hogan, who's president of the country club. They actually have come up with a plan and he's going to talk in just a bit here. In fact, Brian, I think you're unmuted, so I can have you talk to this. But basically, what we've come up with is if people want to play golf at the country club, the country club is going to police it. They're going to make sure that people are following the rules, and frankly, they have been already. Golf courts are not courses, are golf carts are not going to be allowed. And in fact, chief, what I'd like to do is this, this executive order takes away the right of golf carts to drive on our streets until this pandemic situation is over. And until, I shouldn't say until it's over, until the town council decides it's over.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot to forward it to you, but I will, but you know what? I'll forward you the final copy when we, when we hash it out here, but I'll get it to you. So that's basically the nuts and bolts of it. I think the town council is pretty much aware of it. I'll open it up for comments from you guys. I have a couple of comments.
Good evening, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
This is Brian here briefly, just to expand. On behalf of Annette Corbett, our general manager, Brian Godfrey, head pro, all the board of directors, we want to thank the town council for your service. Being good neighbors is within the fabric of our club's mission. And as a board member and fourth generation homeowner in our family here, really could stress that that's at good times and in bad. So for more than a month, we've been working on policies to, first off, we restricted guests addressing concerns from residents. And as you raised here tonight, second of all, within the past couple of days, we've restricted golf carts to emphasize walking, outdoor exercise on the course and also limited the group size to two per group to promote extra spacing and limit the amount of people on the course at any time. And this has been done in collaboration with neighbors, with physicians, with the county health department and the council. And we're going to stay in continued communication, but did share a satisfactory appraisal from the health department this afternoon that complemented both the breadth and the proactiveness of these measures. And that was shared a little while ago with the council members and the clerk. Thank you.
Okay, so Nick, you had some comments?
Yeah, on the, on the quarantine piece, I'm supporting.
Are you on, Nick?
What's that?
What page are you on?
Okay, so just in general, it's on the page that the, let's see, three.
Okay.
Require out-of-state residents who have second homes or who are otherwise inhabiting rental homes in and around the town to self-quarantine upon arrival of the town for fourteen days. And I know that's a measure that, that other communities have instituted, other states have instituted. I guess, the way the order written, it has this going into effect as of midnight tonight. And then if approved, and then, and then through April twentieth. So do we, do we have a sense for, you know, if someone, how do you, A, how do you sort of police that? You know, in general, first of all, it's hard to know who's been here for a full fourteen and who's not. And then second, you know, if somebody comes here next week and, you know, this is lifted or extended, you know, does, does, does the fourteen-day quarantine continue past the expiration of this order? Or does everything go back to normal when the order is lifted here?
Chris, you want to go ahead and address that?
Oh, I think much of this is difficult to police. So it's, I think it's the town's best efforts. Dr. Lomé and I discussed, I wouldn't, as most of the time, I wouldn't want to be in Chief Sokowski's shoes trying to enforce this, and I don't know how you do. I just think it gives you the basis under the state's emergency management provisions. The town is permitted to do this. Dr. Lomé, as the, the president of the council, is technically the primary executive officer. There is a request in there because this order could only be good for seven days unless the council were to agree for it to be longer. So technically, the, the request is that this is good through the next meeting, through May thirteenth. But it's originally, no matter what happens here, Dr. Lomé could say, I, this executive order is being issued and it would be through the twentieth, Nick. But I, I think you're dead on in terms of the policing it and the timing of those things. This is probably the town demonstrating its best efforts to try to be responsible and put policies in place that, on the one hand, I guess, those who want orders like this, the thinking is that helping people along to do the things that you hope they're already doing voluntarily so that there isn't policing that has to be done. And if and when there is a basis and a sound basis, and I don't, I think that's difficult for chief of the department and the decision makers of the town, at least it gives you the basis for trying to enforce, whether that be warnings or fines or penalties, all of which are provided for under the state's catch.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that helps. I mean, I, you know, I'm with, and I get the intent of it, and that helps to clarify. I mean, you know, I'm supportive in general of most of what's laid out here. Just two, two other comments that I make, one of which, just kind of expanding on the, the Brian Hogan's report in the country club. I mean, I, you know, I think the fact, the measures that have been taken and the fact that, you know, the county health department, you know, had a special request to Long Beach Country Club about the measures that they're taking and that they seem satisfied as well. And the fact that, you know, we see improvements being made. I mean, I feel like they're being responsible. I feel like, you know, the provision that we put in here, that golf carts on the roadways, you know, supports that, you know, those efforts as well to keep it just strictly to restrict it to walking and exercising. And I, you know, I've noticed that even other people who aren't members of the club use the course from time to time to walk or run or, you know, they have their dogs out there. So it's nice to have sort of an additional open space, so it's not all confined to Lake Shore Drive. So I'm supportive of the language that, that provides that. Like anything, you know, if it starts to take a bad turn, you know, we can revisit it and put further restrictions in place, but it seems like it's a good balance. The third sort of comment or question, and I brought this up when you had sent out the note, is just curious what the, what the council thinks in terms of the language that would close beach stops. And I, I'm understanding of your, your thought, Bob, that, you know, on one hand, we've got, you know, a lakefront that, that is a destination for folks. And as the weather gets warmer, it's going to be, you know, further of interest for people to come to. My concern with that is if we, if we limit areas, you know, with an increase in volume and people, are we, are we restricting and confining people? Meaning, shouldn't we keep some areas more open and less closed as we get more people here? Because otherwise, you've got things like Moon Valley, which, you know, I think is kind of in the same camp as the lakefront. If you close off the lakefront, then people will find new places to walk in Moon Valley. And so I just feel like keeping, keeping some of those options open, maybe with some increased communication, maybe some increased, you know, policing up and down Lake Shore from time to time to remind people to social distance. I don't know if things like that will help, but it's, it's not an easy decision, you know, either which way you look at it.
Yeah, I think as far as the beach, you know, I'm proud of the fact that Long Beach is a vacation destination. But right now, during this pandemic, we really don't want to push the fact that we're a vacation destination. I think the beach, as far as walking, we don't have much of it. So really, walking on the beach is going to be a fairly confined area for people to walk. And that's probably not what you want in a pandemic. Moon Valley, on the other hand, I just walked through there yesterday. And, you know, there's plenty of opportunity to get off the trail and let people who are coming the other way go. The beach, I think, is going to be a lot more limited that way. So my thought was, at least for now, closing access to the beach. Now, you know, people are going to be concerned and they're going to say, well, gosh darn, those people who live north of Lake Shore Drive, they're going to be able to get on the beach. Well, yeah, they are, and that's just the way it is. This, this isn't the time to worry about equity. This is a time, I think, to worry about protecting the lives of the residents of Long Beach. And spreading this virus with us being in close confines is exactly how we're not going to protect those lives. So that's, that's my feeling. I love the beach as much as everybody else, but I just don't think, at least. I love the beach as much as everybody else, but I just don't think, at least until this situ- we get a handle on this situation, because frankly, there's a lot they don't know about this virus. I, I just heard today, they, they aren't even sure that once you get it, you're going to be immune to it. Um, it may be like herpes where it just keeps coming back, uh, or if they do develop a vaccine, it might be multiple vaccines, and maybe they won't develop a vaccine at all because it's supposed to be a pretty difficult virus to get a vaccine to. Um, so I think with all the unknowns, I think caution is probably the best bet. Uh, you know, I think if there's any lesson, I think that, that I've learned through this whole thing, is every time somebody comes on the news and says something and they say, oh, no, people aren't going to do that, they can't do that, people can't wear face masks, you got to be kidding. Guess what? Those people who were saying that the sky was falling, they're right. So I think until we have a better grasp of this thing, I think caution is the best move. That's my feeling. John, you had concerns about the lakefront too, I think?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your, your sentiments and, and I agree with you in, in a global sense about, you know, want to limiting, limiting behaviors that are going to put people at risk, but I, I'm not so sure, particularly as we've visited this country club situation, I, it's going to be a little tough to say, you know, we're going to close the stops, but everybody can still golf. I mean, I, I don't want to make that comparison as the only thought process, but I, I, if you were serious about keep, I mean, if you're going to go to, you know, the ultimate, if you swung the pendulum all the way to where you'd protect everybody, you know, you'd tell them they couldn't come out of their houses. I don't know, on the other hand, I mean, I've been up and down Lake Shore Drive many times on the warmer days, and I know exactly what we're going to be in for in a couple of months or even a couple, probably three or four weeks. So we're already experiencing huge influx of people with, um, part-time homes. So I think we're probably already at that point now. I mean, I think it will be aggravated more as the warm weather comes, but with schools out everywhere, I don't know that we're going to see a dramatic increase, you know, come June, but I think, you know, the issue is there. I, I just, I don't, I, I'm not, I don't, I can't agree with closing the stops. I feel like, you know, the beach is one of the only relief valves on the whole situation, and I'm not so sure, number one, policing, it'll be a nightmare, I don't know, I mean, unless you're going to go down there with chains and locks, I, I don't know how you're going to police it, number one. Number two, I, I just can't quite get there.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't think policing is the issue, I, because I don't think we're going to police it. This, this is the town's recommendation, uh, and it is that, it's, it's our recommendation, maybe not quite as strong a word, but obviously the police aren't going to be given tickets because we don't want our policemen having to deal with the public on, you know, close quarters like that either. Um, I guess my thought is, is this is a good time to be less of a vacation destination, and maybe if there's no access to the beach, maybe some of those people from the hotspots will decide to stay home. That's a possibility too. So, I guess, um, anybody else have any comments about the beach?
Well, one thing about the beach, one thing about the beach, I mean, uh, where I am at stop 22, 23, 24, you already closed the stops because there's no beach to go to, and so you're going to have less and less opportunity to go to the beach anyway. And so I don't know if closing what's left, I don't know if that's an overall good idea or not, it's a, kind of agree with John, it's, it's going to be a tough situation and, I don't know, if they get out of hand, I suppose we can always close them later.
Ken, didn't they close Washington Park, and that's the only access to get to that beach, isn't it?
They did.
No, you can still get down all their stops though, Mayor.
Oh, you can?
They just, they just closed the parking lot access and the access in your center. Yeah, they closed Fetter's Alley and Washington Park, but.
Okay, so you have to park somewhere else and walk in.
Sheridan Beach.
So it sounds like the general thought is, is we don't want to close the beaches or the beach?
Yeah. We, can we wait and see how it goes?
Let's, so Chris, let's strike that part about closing the beach access.
And hang on, I mean, hang on to it, I mean, don't scrap it.
It could snow tonight, they won't be going anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, um, another, another place on here, Chris, where I thought we needed to make a little modification was on page two, uh, in the final whereas, the third, um, bullet point, it says require out-of-state residents who have second homes, uh, who are otherwise inhabiting rental homes to, to quarantine. I think we want to make sure that we aren't discriminating against out-of-state residents, or I'm sorry, we aren't discriminating against second home people on, we, second.
So, so let's.
We want to basically say, anyone who comes from out-of-state needs to self-quarantine, whether they're an out-of-state resident or not.
Well, how about this language that you and I kind of discussed this earlier when we were tweaking even those who may be traveling that are even for essential, that require individuals that have traveled out of the state of Indiana as well as those traveling to the town from outside of the state, particularly those traveling from identified hotspots, which include, but are not limited to states of Illinois, New York, Florida, for the purposes of occupying a primary residence, a second home or a rental in the town to self-quar-
Yeah, so let's just make sure that language is reflected here on page two.
So just, just to be clear on that language change then, does that mean if there's an individual who has an essential work function in Chicago and, and let's say they're staying here, right, they're, they're, maybe it's their second home here or not, regardless, right, they have a residence here, they're here, they travel into the city for a day to do their essential work, they come back, they have to, they have to quarantine themselves for 14 days, that's the thinking?
Yeah, I don't think the virus cares.
Yeah, I think, Nick, that's something that Dr. Lemay and I kicked around and something for you to consider collectively is, you know, how do you, there are people who live in the town and commute daily to Chicago, right? Or to, or to somewhere in Michigan or elsewhere, you know, so that, that part of it, again, it's, what does self-quarantining mean and are they, yeah, they're not sheltering in place and leaving there, right? They have essential work and they have essential travel. So that part of it, uh, it seems to me, and Dr. Lemay, I don't want to speak for you, as we were kicking that around, your intention was, you wanted them to go to work and come home and not be out and about the town or at Al's, right? If they, but that part of it, once they leave, can't control that, right? They go to Michigan City.
Yeah.
Again, it, it's all tough, I, I, I don't know how you police that. So a- at the end of the day, as Dr. Lemay and I were kicking this around, I thought, I think the thought process was at least putting forth the town's best effort in terms of sentiment of trying to take the next step, I, I guess for the dreaded words of Big Brother, that, you know, hopefully everybody does things responsibly so that everybody is taking care of each other, and if not, at least this puts the town in the position, so circumstances where one isn't, but.
Just to.
All the difficulties that go along with that.
The way that Michigan City Police have been doing it, is if you're arrested for drunk driving or if you're arrested for fighting with your spouse or whatever and you're outside, they will tack on that additional charge for the governor's order. So that's just the tool that we'd work with.
So again, enforcement's going to be a problem, uh, but at least the town is making this recommendation, and I'd say a little stronger than a recommendation, but, well, obviously it is a little stronger because we're going to charge you if you, if you're drunk driving out there.
Well, and I do, I think in the, in the interest of full disclosure, it's much more than a recommendation, this is a requirement and an order and.
Yeah.
It, it, it's the governing law at least for seven days and up to, up to May 13th as the proposal goes, if the council were to agree to the requested extension that's in the language of that order, so I don't want to, I, I, I don't think that's what you mean, Dr. Lemay, but I want to make sure nobody's misguided in that, you know, this is some kind of guidelines, this is, this is the law of the land for the short run.
Yeah.
If adopted.
So, Bob, what pa- what whereas do you want to change on page two? Was it third down?
It was the, uh, yeah, it was the, well, it was, no, it's the, it's the bottom whereas on page two, and it's got three bullet, four bullet points, and it's the third bullet point where we, we don't want to simply talk about out-of-state residents, we want to talk about even if you're a resident here and you're commuting to Chicago, you need to self-quarantine.
Okay.
And we don't want to discriminate against people with second homes, if you're a resident and you have a primary home here, this applies to you also.
Okay.
And can you point me to the original whereas where you wanted to address that as well?
Uh, I thought you fixed that one, didn't you? I think you did.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you fixed the original one, I think we just missed it on the second one.
I got you.
And then the only other editorial change I have is on the third page, um, where we have the numbers and there's three, and the last part of that sentence says, and all parking areas in and around these areas, um, that basically it's talking about the parking lot by the tennis court. I don't think we can close that because that's where the golfers are going to be parking when they, when they go play golf, I talked to Brian Hogan about that today, and their first tee is actually right behind the tennis courts. So I think a number of golfers are going to park there, unload their clubs and their pull cart and stay and be there, uh, and I don't see any reason why we have to not let them do that.
So should we just get rid of everything after courts?
Yes, I believe so, change that, that comma to a period. So, any other comments about the document from the town council?
The curfew time, the, the curfew time that's established, 10 o'clock to 5:00 AM, is that, that's consistent with Michigan City?
It is.
10:00 PM to 5:00 AM?
Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to pass this executive order, actually, the executive order, I guess is my executive order, the way it's, way it's, um, constructed, and then you guys are passing a.
Agreeing to the extension up to including, uh, May 13th, which is the date of the next meeting.
Okay.
Unless something changes beforehand, because otherwise, again, I want the, the rest of the council to understand, Dr. Lemay and I have discussed this, otherwise the authority is for seven days unless agreed to an extension or a renewal by the, by the town council.
So I'll entertain a motion to.
I believe the next, I believe the next meeting is May 11th.
Oh, yeah, I probably misspoke, I was speaking from recollection there, is, is the date, yeah, the date's correct in the document, I misspoke.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve this.
Go ahead, here a second.
John's on mute.
John's muted, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 So Chris, you're going to change the part about the beach and the, the one other editorial change that we had in there?
Already done, and then I'll send it to the, collectively the entire council and Bill Indiana, so that you have what we've discussed here.
Don't forget me.
And we'll get it, yeah, yeah, let's, the chief too, yeah, send it to the chief too.
For sure.
And then we'll get it up on the website. Um, should we do something, do you think, in the Beecher, to let people know that this is the law of the land now?
I think so.
Um.
You know, the, the, Michigan City has it on the radio every day, that's how I get a lot of the updates, they really do.
I, I think that even the, the state statute requires it, it's not set out, but I think as much as you can do to get the word out and communicate that.
So Beecher be a good way to do that?
I think so.
Okay.
Beecher it is.
Oh, what's that? Bill?
Beecher it is, yeah.
Okay.
Bill, can Bill send it out on a email?
Sure.
Yeah, and let's blast it out on an email too. I'll, uh, work tomorrow on trying to come up with a reasonable summary of this, because I don't think we want to put the whole document in the Beecher.
Right.
But I'll try and get that and we'll get it to the Beecher.
Their cutoff usually is like, um.
Thursday at noon.
Yep, Thursday at noon.
I'll get working on it right away tomorrow.
Testing one, too.
Uh, anything else on that? Um, and then, also, you know what, I'll send a copy to Brian Hogan because he wanted a copy also.
Okay.
One, one thing, if Brian's still on, Bob, in the letter, in the letter that came from the country club, it talked about members being able to drive their carts to the base of the hill, so to speak, to unload, I, we're not allowing that, I think maybe Brian needs to make clear to his membership.
Correct, thank you, thank you, John, and, uh, Bob and I discussed that, that was, uh, once we have the text of the ordinance, we're going to make sure that goes to membership and that part of our, uh, notice is changed tomorrow. Thank you.
And I will say, just, I know it's a little bit out of turn, but based on what the, your country club is doing, it certainly seems to be very forward-thinking and, and, uh, much more effort than is being done in others locally as well as other communities, so that, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
APC appointment, uh, Rich Jurcic resigned from the Advisory Plan Commission, uh, his position was a presidential appointment, uh, and so I'm appointing Seth McCormick to take his place, and I believe that term is up next year, so he'll be up for a reappointment at that point.
Hey, Bob, can I ask you a question? Do you, when these appointments come available, can you, uh, announce it so we could get some ideas of anybody out there wants to apply for these positions, rather than just?
We could do that.
I mean, it's, it's, if you want to be inclusive, at least give everybody a chance to put their name in that.
Sure.
Thing and, uh.
We could do that.
That way it's less, uh, dictatorial, if I might add. Seem dictatorial, I mean, don't, don't mean you're dictatorial, it just seems dictatorial.
I see, okay. Um, and Tom McDonald has resigned from the building commission. Now, we made that building commission seven members, and I have to admit, in my experience on building commission, seven members is a little unwieldy. Um, I'm not sure we necessarily need to appoint a replacement, six might be a little more reasonable, let me let you guys think about that and, uh, we can decide what we want to do. That one is a town council appointment, um, so I don't get to be the dictator there, um, town council.
Yay.
So that's the deal on that, let's think about that for next, uh, next month's meeting.
Hey, uh, hey, Bob.
Yeah.
Real quick, um, just there was a comment, uh, that was submitted here, just asking, uh, Brian Hogan, if you're still on, if there's any way to notify the Dune, Dune Land Beach, um, about the rule about the golf carts, so maybe Brian, um, I mean, I, I'm obviously members that are members of the club, if they live in Dune Land, they'll get the note from Brian, um, but if, if maybe contact over there in Dune Land, um, perhaps you could share that, the order with that too.
Correct, all of our members will receive this tomorrow, no matter where they live.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, so we are now to the public comments section, let's see how this works. Um, I can't open it up to everybody because everybody would probably talk at once and we wouldn't know how this is going to work, so what I'm going to do is try and unmute people, and I will read the last three letter, three numbers of your phone number, and if you have a comment, speak up, otherwise, um, we'll go to the next one.
Maybe they could raise their hand.
Yeah, if I knew how to tell if you raised your hand, that's the, can somebody tell?
Hey, Bob, I think MT had a question about leaves.
MT, not you. Who's that?
Hello, hi, this, my name is Michelle, I'm at 1608 Nichols Court.
Yep.
Um, I, I respect the ordinance, I think it's a great idea, we're sheltering in place in our first home, but, um, I was wondering in regards to the ordinance, um, about working on the, our, our, our home, which is in disrepair, um, and like having leaves out by the 22nd or doing other maintenance is, or the 20th, um, my apologies, is there, um, are we allowed to visit the property as long as we don't leave the premises? I'm confused about whether or not we're allowed to go there. there at all.
So you're coming from Illinois?
Correct.
Yeah. So basically, the order is to shelter in place. So if you come from Illinois, you, you know, you probably can work on your property, but you can't, you really shouldn't go visit the neighbors or even take walks.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay. So if I read the last three numbers of your phone number, and you want to comment, comment. So 786?
It's Tom.
Oh, it's Tom, okay. Oh, Tom was already unmuted, okay. So 608? What does that say? Hoby Mom? Somebody said, "Hoby Mom" there.
Yeah, she's unmuted.
Okay. No comments. No comments?
No, she is.
Everybody asked the question about the golf carts.
Great.
I was, I was really concerned because last Saturday, Lake Shore Drive was like a toll road at rush hour. There were so many people. I, we just finally left and went home because we couldn't walk. There were too many people. And so I was really, that's what I was so concerned about, because I sent you an article about how the virus can spread even more when people are running and jogging and riding bike.
Okay. So let, guess we've dealt with the golf carts as far as people running on Lake Shore Drive. I guess hopefully people will maintain their social distance, huh?
But if, if they have to shelter in place for two weeks, then that...
That helps. Yeah. Okay. 279? Becky Lampo?
Those are the court reporters.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, they're, they're on, and I'm going to send them copies of this, too.
Okay.
Melanie Davis? Somebody named Collins? Tracy, Tracy B.? Bridgette McKee?
Richard, I can't unmute you. They're not letting me unmute. Okay, Abigail's, Abigail's iPad.
It's Bart.
Pat McCusker?
Hey, Bob, you might want to make sure you mute after you, because when you unmuted everyone, everyone that you unmuted is currently unmuted. You might mute him before you move to the next person.
It's going to get loud, huh? Okay. Let me go back and mute all those folks, then.
He just unmuted them.
Yeah, I think I just screwed up. Okay. Continuing to move along here. 188?
Was, did, did you have a chance for Pat McCusker?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, a quick comment, if I may. So, hey, everybody, my name is Pat McCusker. I have a home there at 2208 Chassleton. It is second home. We're, we're here in Chicago most of the time, but, but back and forth, and spent our summer there. So thank you, everybody, for all your leadership and service. This is my first meeting, and, and really appreciate all you guys do for the town. My question was around the, the building zone appeal process. I'm, I'm currently looking to put a shed in our backyard, and, and just curious when those meetings may start happening. I met with the gentleman who's, who's going to potentially help me with my shed. His, his sales are way down. He's laying off his employees, and it was, it was a disheartening meeting, because I was ready to write him a check. He was ready to get some work done and keep his people employed, and, and, and given the delays and not been able to do that. So I was just curious if there are any updates on when the BZA meetings will resume, and, and if there's anything I can do to keep that process moving.
You're talking about the BZA or Building Commission?
I think it's the BZA. I'm actually not sure of a five block or a variance. And so... Commission, the paperwork for a variance.
Okay, so you're talking about a variance?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I've got a non-conforming lot, and so I, I need to...
So we're going to have to decide what we do about the Board of Zoning Appeals. Our, our chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals has COVID-19 and is in Chicago. So we're going to have to decide if we have meetings without him or not.
And Dr. Lemay, I, I can speak to that a little bit, because the, the last meeting that was to be scheduled was right in the, right, right in the midst of, of that happening to his family. The other members were able to and willing to step forward. This Zoom process and doing the electronic meetings, all of that combined together just didn't mesh well with the timing of being able to have April's meeting. So that's the only reason that it did not occur. But I, I do know that the rest of them, and, and thanks to Meg, who is tireless, the, the BZA secretary, as well as Rich Jurcic, he kind of took the initiative on that. So I wouldn't expect that there would be any more bumps in the road, but I'm hesitant to say that any day because things change daily. But I, the BZA is prepared to move forward, whether the president is or isn't back to full strength.
Good, okay. Good. I hadn't, wasn't aware of that. Excellent.
So, so the meeting, the, the next meeting will then be in May, or will it be another meeting in April?
It's, it, it, May, because April's meeting would technically be tomorrow. That one was put off as a result, and because of the timing. So May would be the next meeting.
And I believe that's the third Monday in May.
Second.
Second, okay. Oh, great. Okay.
Is there anything, is there anything? Again, just given the circumstances, the extreme circumstances, is there anything I can do while, while the variance is in motion to accelerate the process? Again, I, you know, the guy's got small businesses, playing people often, and I'm just, just wondering if there's a way to accelerate things, so we can, you know, get this little small company economy going again.
Yeah, no, I think the meeting has to take place, and the, and the process generally takes at least two months for seeking a variance.
And Mr. McCusker, just because, this is Chris Willoughby. I'm BZA attorney. Maybe you could find a way to get in touch with me, and maybe I could lead you in the right direction and/or to speak with Mr. Jurcic. And that way, we can kind of address that appropriately and outside of this. But I'll, I'll help to the extent I can, and I know Mr. Jurcic is the same.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that, Chris.
Nothing from 089. Eyes are getting bad. 839, 835? 063?
Hello, guys. Hello, guys. This is Dr. Michael O'Donohue. I am a member at Stop 18, and as well as you guys know, I've been working in the community for 15 years, and somebody who spends half my time in Long Beach, as well as half my time in Chicago. I want to first start out by relaying a story to you guys about a town in Colorado, Gunnison, Colorado. In September 1918, when the Spanish flu was, was going through, the town walled itself off and did not let anybody in. And in the months to come, they ended up having, through the first wave of the Spanish flu, they had nobody sick. The second wave, they had nobody sick. But roughly six months later in March, after they had opened their doors, 10% of the, of the town got sick. So I want to put something to you to say, before you decide to close your doors, that you know that this is not something that's going to stop in the next three months. It's going to go for six months, if not longer. Okay? Importantly, the next question is, I've been asked as a backup to run the COVID center at the hospital. And so I'd like to know what you guys are going to say for me when, if somebody's asking me to come in, to step up and put my life on the line, and you guys aren't going to let me even go to my house in Long Beach. The next thing would be, what about those people that you're not going to let go to their house? Are, are you going to allow them to opt-in at that time when they're there? And finally, what I'd like to know is that with Stop 18, we have a, a very small number of people at Stop 18, and I think that it behooves the council to, with these accusations and all these problems that have occurred at Stop 18, to do something to bring everybody in Stop 18 together to address these issues. Thank you for listening to me, and I welcome your response.
Yeah, I, I guess my response, Dr. Donahue, is that we're not saying you can't come to Long Beach. We're saying when you come, you need to self-isolate.
How am I going to self-isolate? If, if I have to go from my house to the hospital back and forth for weeks on end?
You stay in your house or in your yard, except for when you have to go.
Okay. So how am I going to get food? How am I going to get, are people going to bring food to my house?
Well, I think there are delivery services, but yeah, that's, that would be a reasonable alternative.
Okay, it's done. Okay. I, I just, you know, I, I can understand that. Why don't you just follow the rules that the CDC has put together for social distancing, and how everybody's supposed to be taking care of themselves at this point, instead of putting a general restriction on all the people in the town?
Well, our concern is that because we are such a vacation community, we really feel that it would not be in the best interests of our town to have folks from a high-risk, from a higher, and, and, and area where the disease is endemic, where that's a high-risk area, to flee the social distancing and the self-isolation orders in Chicago and environs to come here. We think that puts this area at high risk.
Well, a, a, as I said about the, the town from Colorado, this is going to hit everybody in Long Beach eventually. You cannot stop it, no matter what you do. You cannot prevent it from happening. So I would disagree. Just follow the norms and the, the rules put down by the CDC, and that is the best means of action.
Yeah, I, I guess my argument to that is, in 1918, they didn't have the capability of developing any treatment. Hopefully, by the time that that six months goes by and it hasn't hit here, and we're able to open things up, hopefully there's a treatment.
Doctor, you know, you know that will not be the case.
Well, I think a treatment's going to happen much sooner than a vaccine, that's for sure.
Anyway, we don't have to argue about this, but that is my, my, my advice to the board. And please, I, I would like to just talk about the issues at Stop 18, and I think that it behooves the town to invite everybody at Stop 18 to have a discussion, again, whether you do this, that is something online, something like we did tonight. That needs to happen. And that includes what they're doing at the bus stop.
No, I can talk to the park board. That's, that's, it's, that stop is their purview, and so I'll talk to them about that, and we'll see what happens, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. 826?
Yes. Okay, that's Donna Cavanaugh, Stop 21. Thank you for, Mary Lou McFadden, for telling me how to get into this meeting, everybody. Are you there? Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Lemay, I applaud you for getting this information out about the virus in Long Beach. I just, I have, I have to tell you, over here, all of my second homeowners were here, walking and biking and doing all sorts of outside activities, which, it was so beautiful. I understand it. I, as a resident full-time since 1956, I would like to know, if you could put in the paper, you don't have to name, but just put in the paper, in the news, or in the Long Beecher, or even send us a dialogue via text or email, how many people are infected? Because I'd like to know if we're, if the virus is coming here. And I had a gentleman, I called about Gunnison, Colorado. I went, I graduated from Gunnison. I know about that town. My grandfather was in World War I during the last epidemic. He got the flu. He wasn't sent over to Europe to fight the Germans. He survived. But I've seen these epidemics for a long time in my family. So, and I have second homeowners that are asking me, Donna, are we supposed to shelter in place? What are we supposed to do? So the more information you can put out, I appreciate. So that's the first comment I have. The second one briefly is, I went to the last BZA meeting. I had just come from a doctor's appointment. I, he was talking. I asked the head of the BZA, who now has the virus, who was that that spoke? It happened to be my neighbor, who shall remain nameless. Everybody else has to get up at meetings and say where they're from, what, what their address is. They would not allow that to happen. After the meeting, I went up to the head of the BZA, and I said, "Could I please know who that was?" And he told me to get away, and he walked away from me. I called... And he told me to get away and he walked away from me, I called a home number in Illinois um, and they did not respond. I, I know that he went to Florida where maybe he contracted the virus. I'm just saying, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, if you're going to tell everybody at meetings, they have to stand up and say who they are, it should apply across the board, don't you agree?
I agree.
Thank you, I, I applaud what you all are doing, I know it's crazy, but every day I wake up and I hear the pounding at Lake Shore Drive on my house. I wouldn't wish what's happening to those McMansions on the lake on my worst enemy. Do you have any plans going forward? Will there be any more building on Lake Shore Drive?
There's a lot of noise in the background, Donna, will there be any more building on Lake Shore Drive?
It's not my noise in the background, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if there will be a moratorium on that, if there's any lots left, I don't know, but what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, no, no moratorium, but everybody will have to comply with the ordinances.
Okay, well, that's all I wanted to know, thank you very much, please put in the beach or also how people can Zoom into the meetings in the future. Uh, I'm sixty-seven, so, uh, thank you to Mary Lou for helping me get to this point and, uh, all the best to you, thank you for what you're doing in a very, very difficult year.
Um, oh five five. Oh two oh.
MT has their hand up.
MT. MT, let me see if I can find them. How'd they put their hand up, I don't know how to do that. MT, huh?
It should be on the first page, Bob, but you're on the gallery view, yes, she's unmuted now.
I, um, this is Michelle again from sixteen oh eight Nichols, I just, I can mute, raise my hand through the participants
Good.
by clicking on, I just wanted to follow up and ask if you could also publish in the public notice that it's okay for us to go to our second homes for maintenance and to check on. I mean, I think not checking on our homes for months on end is probably not a good idea either. Um, as long as we follow the shelter in place, just, I, I've been reading online, there's people that are confused that think we shouldn't be driving down the streets at all from Illinois or that we shouldn't even go to our homes, but it's a substantial investment that I think it's important that we're diligent in making sure that no one's broken in or the water pipes haven't broken or that our leaves are done, so I just wondered if that was possible, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, we can include that in the, in the, in the announcement. Oh two oh. Six six three. Two two seven. No comment. Thank you. Yeah, that's good, one thirty-two. Eight ninety-two. Eight forty-six. Three twenty-seven. Four one eight.
This is four one eight.
Yeah.
Uh, the, um, pack it in, pack it out, works. Since nineteen sixty-four, I've been a resident and uh, it, it absolutely works. So I think just get rid of all those toters and if necessary, uh, make the stops look like they're very unobtrusive and the people will never know the difference.
Thank you. Great, I'm on your side. Oh eight nine. Eight nine two. One eighty-two. Five one oh. Nine nine two. Five seven five. Oh seven two.
I sent a text, he said he's going to call tomorrow night, he's.
Oh seven two.
He's tired.
Four oh four. Eight three five.
What? Hello?
Eight three five.
I mean, you don't know, hello?
Eight three five, we hear you. We hear you, go ahead, talk.
Um, yes, I, um, have a home on Lake Shore Drive also, I'm a Chicago person. I concur with the things you say, I think that's great, we'll do whatever we can. I would also like to add, I ran out there on Sunday to pick up some things because when I left the last time, I never expected that I wouldn't be back right away. Um, but it was crowded, Lake Shore Drive was full of people, they were walking ten abreast across the street, strolling along with coffee cups, I think somebody has to enforce what you're saying. Secondly, I have for a couple of years complained about the fact that motorcycles go roaring down Lake Shore Drive and roaring back as every nice day, and I understand they did it last weekend too. And I think that since you're enforcing things or we're all trying to enforce what we, what was decided tonight, I think somebody has to enforce the bikers not to use Lake Shore Drive as their drag strip or whatever it is, there's roads, country roads across the highway and I would like somebody to do that.
Bob, they need to identify themselves, we're not having them do that.
You're right, I'm sorry, what's your name, ma'am, and where do you live?
Sharon, uh, my name is Sharon Goodman, I'm at twenty twenty-three, Lake Shore.
Okay, thank you, we'll, uh, we'll take that under advisement, we'll talk to the chief about it and see what he can do.
Thank you.
Chief, maybe if we see three people walking ten abreast, we can like give them the siren or something?
We can try.
All right, let's give it a shot. Oh five five. Five oh eight. Oh two two. Four oh four. I'm through the whole list, is there anybody who wants to talk who hasn't had the opportunity? Anybody aware of anybody who hasn't had the opportunity? Nobody's aware, um, and if anybody does have a comment and, um, somehow I missed you on here and that's certainly a possibility, uh, go ahead and email me at L B P Lemay at gmail dot com and I will make sure it gets forwarded to everybody on the town council. Any council comments?
Hello, just hey Bob, thank you for, uh, setting this up. Perfect, but it was, uh, definitely effective and improvements for the next, thanks for doing this.
I'll hopefully get better at this, yeah.
You're doing great.
Okay, Bill, claims approval. Bill. Did we lose Bill?
I think he said he got knocked offline, so can I read those?
Go ahead, yep.
Um, claims were number one, seven, one zero eight through one seven one nine two. Yeah. Totalling. Oh. Totalling one eighty-five, nine ninety-one sixty-six. And then salaries for March of twenty were sixty thousand, one oh eight twenty-five.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second, John Wall.
All in favors, now say aye.
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 Paul. Night, everybody.
Good night.